So we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so welcome everybody to the Union Township Planning Commission's September meeting. And we will start with roll call, please.
Um, Albrecht.
Here.
Buckley is excused. Gross.
Here.
LaBelle. Is going to be laid. Lab is excused. Shingles.
Here.
Thering.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
All right, we have six present.
Okay. You didn't call me, but I guess you counted, you counted me as, you counted me, right?
Squadrado.
I'm, I'm part of the quorum.
I skipped, I'm sorry, I skipped.
No problem. All right, thank you. Um, so let's see. So next item is approval of tonight's agenda. You've got tonight's agenda. It has, um, four new business items on it. Any, anything else that anyone's aware of or any changes to the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Sports.
So a motion by Thering, uh, seconded by Gross to approve the agenda as prepared. Any further discussion? Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So agenda's approved. Next item is approval of the minutes. So we last met on August 23rd. That was our, it was our August meeting. It was on a special date, but, uh, so you have the minutes from that meeting. Are there any corrections to the August 23rd minutes?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes.
Sport.
Okay, motion by Williams, seconded by Gross to approve the, uh, August 23rd minutes as submitted. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So, uh, next item is correspondence, board reports, presentations. So first item is Commissioner Thering, updates from Board of Trustees.
At our last meeting, or Board of Trustees meeting, um, one highlight was we passed a resolution of intent and authorization for purchase of a new outdoor fitness court for McDonald Park. If you'd like to actually see what that looks like, just go to our meeting packet for the last meeting, last week's meeting packet. And you'll kind of, it'll give you a little more detail of what it is and what it's going to look like. The approximate total cost is going to be about $215,000 and what we did, uh, by passing it now is the initial purchase of $168,000 to get the equipment here at a reduced cost rather than waiting till 2023. Where it could be a little bit higher cost and the intent is to have it installed, uh, I believe, spring of 2023. There will be, uh, ARPA funds will be used, $168,000 will be, uh, used for that. I, I believe if I'm saying this correctly, there was an opportunity for a grant through, uh, Priority Health. Is that correct? Priority Health for $30,000. There's, there's limited grants for that, so, um, there, the staff is working on that along with, uh, it was mentioned. They're going to look, the township's going to look for other founding, funding opportunities, including but not limited to an application to the Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe for Funding Award onto their 2% program. So we're trying to find, to try to reduce that cost in the end. One thing that I thought was interesting about that, that I liked was, um, there is an option to include a work of a local artist and the township has the intention of, uh, using, uh, Michigan Art Reach. Part of this, of the local artist would be eligible to receive an award of $5,000. It is the intent of the staff to pursue this option in partnership with Art Reach of Michigan. It requires very little maintenance. I think they estimate it about $500 every five years. And I, they mentioned, if I understand correctly, maybe every 10 years it might have to be either replaced or more intense repair.
Yeah, I think every 10 years you were talking about the, the surface, the, the tiled surface.
So we've got something, um, I think pretty big coming to McDonald Park in the spring of 2023. So again, I would encourage anybody that's interested, just take a look at our, our meeting, uh, agenda, our agenda packet and you'll see, it, it'll show some pictures and a little more detail. I, I think I touched on a lot of points. And maybe Mr. Danny, if I missed something, please jump in, sir.
You have covered it perfectly.
Okay. That is it. That's all I have to report.
Any questions for Commissioner Thering? Did you all use the screens at the meeting or is that still coming?
No, that's, no, we're using that.
Okay.
I, I, I mean, it'll eventually, I believe it'll eventually go to almost all of our meetings. Uh, right now, we just want to make sure we, uh, ironed out all the wrinkles in it right now, but we've used it, I want to say the last two meetings, at least the last two, so, um...
Have you gotten any people like making public comments via that?
No, I think the first meeting, were you in another room Rodney?
I, I was, uh, public, uh, it was a public comment. I think Kim Smith was as well.
Yeah.
But we were simply elsewhere, uh, to, it was to, to try it out.
Hmm.
We, we have not, other than the posting on the website, our normal notices, we have not, uh, put a big splash out about it at this point because it's essentially what I call a soft open, hitting the kinks out.
Okay.
But the, the intent is to, to, uh, add it into the planning commission meeting.
Yep.
If anybody here or anybody in the public would like to participate from home during the public comment portion, jump on in. So you don't have to leave your, you can do everything from the comforts of your own home. You just have to have the technology to, to participate, so.
Very good. All right, well, thank you. Um, well, next item is Buckley, updates from ZBA. He's not here. I don't know, have they, they probably haven't even met since.
They have not been.
Okay, there, we'll skip that. And then the next one is, uh, Commissioner Shingles, updates from sidewalks and pathways.
There have been no meetings scheduled to my knowledge, so nothing to report.
Okay. When will they be meeting next?
Uh, we have a meeting scheduled October 27th.
Okay.
Will notice be going out? I can see if you're about to, yeah, if you're going to meet that shortly.
Gotcha, okay. You said October 20?
27.
Seven, okay, thank you.
Be at, uh, 6 o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Commissioner Shingles? He's our representative to sidewalks and pathways. Okay. Any other, uh, correspondence or reports or presentations that anyone is aware of? Okay, seeing none. So next item is public comment. So towards the beginning of our meetings, we have a public comment where individuals are invited to address the planning commission on items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you wish to address the planning commission on any item that is not on tonight's agenda, we ask you, come to the podium, give us your name and address for the minutes and limit your comments to three minutes. This public comment is open at 7:10. And seeing none, we'll assume that people are here for other purposes. There'll be a, a more extended public comment later in the meeting as well. So we'll go ahead and close that back up. So we can move on to our new business. So the first new business item is a site plan review. Preliminary site plan application, PSPR 22-11 for Clint's Autobody Expansion 5598 South Mission Road. So, uh, we'll turn it over to Rodney first, then we'll hear from the applicant and then we'll have consideration.
Thank you. Uh, you have, uh, you have the site plan before you have, uh, this is a preliminary site plan application. Uh, you have our report that's dated September 12th. Uh, I'd like to cover some, some, uh, around before we talk about the site plan itself. Uh, this is an older site, uh, the, at least part of it dates back to about 1960. The proposal is a significant expansion of the business, uh, with a, with a building addition on the back to, to add additional service space and, and other, other site improvements. Uh, as, as we were working with the applicant on this, this, uh, site plan, uh, we, you know, came to understand that we had a problem with regards to the residence. This is a, is a commercial building, autobody shop. Attached to that is a, is a res, a residence, a, a single residence. And, uh, as I said, that residence date, dates back to around 1960. So, uh, it's, under the current ordinance, would be considered a legal non-conforming use in, in the business district. The problem we ran into was it was being rented without, uh, the necessary rental certification. It was being rented illegally. Uh, it was not, not an intentional thing, uh, we don't think, on the part of the, on the owners, but, uh, nonetheless, it was, it was an illegal rental. And so the site plan actually, uh, at site plan application was essentially put on hold to, uh, get that addressed because we couldn't bring a, a site plan before you when we had an illegal activity on the, on the property that related to the zoning ordinance as well. So the applicant, uh, the property owner, the business owner was very cooperative with regards to that. Uh, and that, that issue has been, uh, addressed, at least, uh, started. They, they have, uh, worked with the, the tenants to, to, uh, have them move out of that property. And they've also, uh, applied for the, uh, the necessary rental certification. They're now going through the process of getting the property up to, up to the necessary codes that apply. Uh, so as far as, as far as that side's concerned, that has been resolved to, to allow us to move forward again with this site, site plan application. On, uh, on page two of our report, page 25 of your packet, uh, up at the top, we just have a comment about non-conforming sites. Uh, this is, we, this is a non-conforming site. In addition to that, talking about that as a non-conforming residential use. It's a non-conforming site simply because it was developed many years before our current ordinance was put in place with the current site development standards. Uh, when we updated our zoning ordinance, we added a section called non-conforming sites uh, that gives you flexibility, gives the applicant more flexibility, related to, uh, how the ordinance requirements apply when they're doing a project like this one. Uh, one of the key features of that section is it, it does allow the applicant to propose a timeline for, for improvements. So not all the improvements are done immediately. So, uh, in this case, uh, so they're proposing some of the parking-related improvements to be delayed while they're doing obviously the building work first. So, uh, and we'll talk a little bit more about the details of that in a minute, but this is, this is an element that, that, uh, this non-conforming site section allows you to consider, uh, and approve as part of a site plan. The, uh, this non-conforming site section also, uh, kind of, it puts a focus on what's most important. It says that, uh, public safety deficiencies need to be taken care of and it has kind of a menu of other items to, uh, to address on, on, as part of a, uh, a site plan for improvements while not necessarily requiring that everything be brought up to current standards. And the site plan that's before you reflects, reflects that characteristic. So just a couple of comments about, uh, oh, actually, one more comment about the residential on page three of our report. I talked about this being a non-conformant residential use. Uh, one of the other changes in our, that was made in our, in our current zoning ordinance uh, was the addition or the expansion of the mixed-use building section. This section, we, we, we use this section when we looked at the Denon Broomfield project. This section also, it, basically what it says is you can have residential units, uh, in a commercial area. It just, they can't be the primary use, uh, but, uh, allows for resident, residential over business. It also, when there's, when there's an existing non-conforming residence, the language of the ordinance is, uh, includes this, it allows that to be considered part of a mixed-use building, even if it's on the first floor. So that, that section is in the ordinance, uh, and, uh, and it applies to this project. So actually approval, ultimately approval of the site plan and development of the project as proposed, can eliminate that legal non-conformity, conformity related to that residence, which is a benefit for the owner uh, because it, it allows, for example, if there was a fire or tornado, uh, it would allow that unit to be rebuilt. Whereas right now, there are restrictions on, on that, that if it's damaged beyond a certain point, uh, that can be more of a challenge to rebuild it. So, uh, that mixed-use section is a benefit here as well. Overall, we, we found the, the preliminary site plan to be, uh, genuine good order. We had, we had two, uh, items to talk to you about tonight. Uh, mentioned earlier about parking. Uh, the applicant is proposing to, uh, have a timeline for doing the paving work, uh, both for expanding the commercial parking lot and, and also paving the residential, uh, parking area and driveway. Uh, the ordinance requires that both be paved, uh, but this non-conforming site section allows for some, some, uh, timeline. They have proposed to do the commercial work, uh, by the end of the, of the 2023 construction season. So essentially about a year from now, uh, to do the commercial side. They have proposed to delay the, doing the residential paving till the end of 2025. Uh, in our report, we, we noted, uh, that we can be concerned about that. The concern is primarily, that's just a long time from now. It's, it, uh, what we, what we recommended to the applicant was they look at having no more than a two-year timeframe because it's simply beyond that, it's hard to track and make sure things actually get done. So we have, we've recommended that, that as part of any action you take tonight, that you consider requiring that the residential paving be done by the end of 2024. We're comfortable with, with, with a delay. Uh, the, the existing lot is gravel, it's, it's suitable, uh, but the ordinance does require paving. So we're, we're comfortable with recommending that it be done, but that be done a year earlier than they've, they've asked for. So that's an item to, that we've asked you to consider. And give the applicant direction, uh, as part of any action on this plan. The other item, uh, was that they, they have a, a shipping container on the property. It's noted on the site plan. Uh, unfortunately, there's not an option for a shipping container storage, uh, outdoor storage of a shipping container in this zoning district. They, they certainly, they can have a pole barn out there. They can, in fact, have a pole barn out there and put the shipping container inside the structure and we don't have any issue with that, but, uh, uh, basically if, to, to have a shipping container stored outside of the property, the property has to be zoned industrial, uh, or, or otherwise be approved for an outside storage area. And this zoning district doesn't allow for it. So we have, uh, on, uh, page four of our, our report, page 27 of the packet, we've essentially just given two options. Uh, we're comfortable with the applicant considering either one. One is for the shipping container to be removed, uh, and, and a note be added simply that they won't have it on the property. Uh, the other one is if this container is intended to be used for the period of construction of the building, uh, storage of equipment or, uh, whatever needs there are related to the construction of the building, uh, then a note could be added to that effect that this, that the container will be removed after the building is completed and, and occupied. Uh, so, uh, that, that would address the issue, uh, either way and resolve the ordinance violation. So with that, that in mind, we're, we're very happy to recommend this for, uh, preliminary site plan for approval subject to those two issues being addressed. I have to answer questions as we go along.
Okay. So usually at this point, we give the applicant an opportunity to, or the applicant's representative, an opportunity to talk about the project. So I didn't even see you behind the podium there.
I'm hiding.
I assumed you must be.
Good evening. My name's Tim Beeby. I'm with Central Michigan Surveying and Development here in Union Township. And I have with me, um, Clint, who is the owner and operator of the business portion and the, the residential portion. Uh, Rodney's gone through the, the site plan with you. Uh, we don't have any issues with the, the two items that were brought up. So they'll be addressed in the final site plan. And, uh, we're, we've been working with staff in regards to, you know, limited space up front and landscaping and, uh, so we're, we'll have that in order when we come back to you for a final site plan. If you have any questions for myself or the owner, we're here to try and answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, you've heard from township staff, you've heard from the applicant. Uh, this is open for discussion by planning commissioners and those folks are here for questions if you have any.
Rodney, I may have misunderstood you, but I thought you said two different dates on the paving, one residential and one commercial. One, uh, residential was 2023 and commercial was 2025. And here, the residential looks like moved to 2024. What about the commercials? That?
Uh, we, we have no objection to the proposal really, the commercial side. Uh, that, that's proposed on the site plan to be 2023, uh, constructed, uh, constructed by the end of the 2023 construction season. And we're very comfortable with that.
So it says residential shall be completed by the end of 2024. Is that what?
That's, that's our proposal. The, on the site plan, it says 2025. So we're recommending that instead of 2025, that the planning commission simply include a condition that says it must be, the residential portion must be done by the end of 2024 construction season. If you, if you adopt that as a condition on your, on your approval action, they'll then, uh, update the final site plan to, to reflect that.
Cause, I, I'm sure it's, is that a big, big paving project that was?
It's, it's just, the, the problem that we have are they're, they're small paving projects, which means the cost of, the cost of it per square foot is not like what you're putting in a larger parking lot. What we're trying to do is space it out. There's quite a bit of money that's going out with the building and trying to get to the commercial side. The residential side's not even being rented. It's got to be updated. There's going to be work, the needs to be done on that side. So we were trying to postpone that out and not spend the money on a parking lot that's not going to get used.
That was kind of my thought process because time flies by and, and I've done some of these projects myself and they're insanely expensive. So I didn't know if that was, uh, if that 2024 date was going to be an issue, you know, an issue or if it's workable.
Um, it should be an issue.
Okay.
I mean, if that's what we have to do, then it can go through, that's why I wanted to.
Okay, I'm just, you know, asking if that's.
Yeah.
The other thing Rodney, more of a joke, you know, when you talk about 1960 being kind of an archaic time, just remember I was born in 1960. Could you be a little more sensitive to the timeframe of this whole thing?
Now, hang on a minute, cause I'm, I'm not that much younger than you. Uh, all I said was it was, it was before our first ordinance was adopted, 1971. 1971 was also a really long time ago, unfortunately.
I could probably relate.
So that makes me the oldest person in the room.
I think it does. I didn't want to say that, but I thought, you know, take the lead from that. Any other year would not have bothered me. That year was, that's.
That's why they say that stuff that happened like at that time is grandfathered, right? It's all grandfathered.
Yeah, all grandfathered stuff. There we go. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Well, come on out.
I would like to make a motion to approve the PSPR 22-11 preliminary site plan dated August 22nd, 2020 for a 3,200 square foot addition to the existing Clint's Autobody Shop located at 5594 and 5598 South Mission Road in the southeast quarter of Section 34 and in the B4 general business zoning district, finding that it can fully comply with the applicable zoning ordinance. finding that it can fully comply with the applicable zoning ordinance requirements for preliminary site plan approval, including Sections 14.2. P, Required Site Plan Information and 14.2. S, Standards for Site Plan Approval, subject to the following conditions. One, paving of the residential parking area as depicted on the site plan shall be completed by the end of the 2024 construction season rather than the 2025 as proposed. Two, remove the shipping container and add a note to the final site plan confirming that no shipping containers will be brought onto or maintained on the premises or add a note to the final site plan confirming that the proposed shipping container will only be used for temporary storage during the building addition construction and will be removed from the premises prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the addition.
Okay, motion was made by Thering, seconded by Gross. Further discussion? Okay, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Uh, Thering?
Yes.
Shingles?
Yes.
Aubrey?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Squadrado?
Yes.
LaBelle?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Okay, all yeses.
Okay, thank you. So that's approved. And so we'll look forward to seeing the final site plan when we see it. So our next new business item is a final site plan application. It's PSPR 22-14. Final site plan application, Michael Engineering Expansion, 5625 Venture Way.
Thank you. This, you should have the site planner packet, also our our report dated September 9th. This is a final site plan. You've seen this one before, preliminary site plan stage. The the applicant has has updated the plans to address the the items that came up, including the, if you recall, as part of the preliminary site plan approval, you granted a temporary relief from from construction of the sidewalk. Because the property was in the industrial district, that's now reflected on the on the plans in that in that format. We found the plans to be be overall in in good order. We had, we have a couple of of very simple housekeeping items. And there are a couple of outside agencies that that we're still waiting on on confirmation of their final approvals. With regards to the outside agencies, we're, these are ones that we're not concerned that their actions are going to affect the site design. Typically, we would not bring a site, final site plan to you if there are still outside agencies involved that were a change or or some action that they might require as part of an approval would affect the overall site design. So in this case, it's, these are pretty simple actions that they'll be taking, but we just haven't received that word yet. But we did have a couple of items. If you look on page two of our report, page fifty-seven of your packet, we had some comments about bicycle parking. Our ordinance does require that commercial industrial sites provide, actually multifamily residential as well, provide for some some basic bicycle parking amenities. In this case, the applicant had included a note on their plans that they that they they provide that within their building, which is a completely acceptable answer, except they didn't show us where on the on the floor plan. They didn't provide any details about it. So we're simply looking for that information to be added to an updated final site plan. The location inside is fine. They, I'm sure that the the space will meet our ordinance requirements, but we just need those details to be on the plan to show that. So that that that'd be a simple change. The other change is on page three of our our report. This, there's one, they're one short of of the of the trees that are required per ordinance. There's a formula in our ordinance for for landscaping, in particular for for the shade trees that are required. They simply were one short. We asked that they add one more onto the plan at a suitable location. And we've already discussed the outside agencies that are there below that in our report. So at this point, we're very comfortable recommending this final site plan for approval. We have included your packet of, you know, set of of draft, potential draft motions. You'll see the motion that includes some conditions, it it lists four conditions. Two of those are the bicycle parking and the tree. The third one is the simply documentation from the outside agencies. And then the last one is a simple requirement that the plan be reviewed and accepted by the zoning administrator. So with with that, we're happy to answer any questions as we go along.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Tim Beebe with Central Michigan Survey. We do have a representative from from ownership here tonight. So if there is anything that you want to ask about operational, I'll refer to him. I'd like to address the two items that are in the write-up. Adding, dimensioning and detailing of the current bike parking. On the site plan, you'll see that there's a clouded area that says bike parking. It's indoors. And short of taking a picture, the the people that are using that are are the employees. When they do come with bikes, they they, it's an open space area. They put their kickstand down and leave their bike inside, so it's not out in front of the building. Short of that, taking a picture, I'm not sure what I do.
Well, if you have a floor plan sheet, my suggestion is just put a box on the floor plan, dimensions on it.
I don't have a floor plan sheet on the existing building, though. And that's in the existing building.
Can you sketch something out roughly?
Roughly.
I think roughly is fine. Give us an idea of where it is.
Okay, because it's it's right in front of the the overhead door, which is highlighted on that, on the site plan. So I'll do something to deal with that. Also, the the tree, if you could take a look at your count. Perhaps you didn't credit me for the large existing tree that's out front.
Maybe I didn't have that.
There's there's about a 24 to 30-inch tree that you're trying not to take up.
Yeah, and that and that existing tree would count. So if that's the case, then that item would be removed. My suggestion is for tonight, just because we're looking at this in the media, I would include it as a condition. Peter will check it, he'll he'll verify the count. And if it if it meets the numbers, including the existing tree, then that condition will be satisfied.
Okay, the the last ones, we have Isabella County Transportation Commission, ICTC, that we haven't gotten a response back from. The likelihood that they'll actually bring somebody to the industrial site, it's small, but it's possible. So we will get that for you. And the other one is the township's DPW department, which we haven't heard back from. So you'll probably hear from them before I do.
But in the, in this case, for for public, we're, our public services, this is an existing building, obviously has existing water and sewer. Their their review is primarily the point, look to make sure that that's not going to be affected or or damaged by what's proposed. So we're not expecting any action by by public services to affect the site design.
Yeah, they, we're having to add a a fire line and a fire hydrant to meet the requirements of the fire department. So therefore, it must go to the DPW director to to review that. So that's what we're waiting on. All right, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer, operational-wise or something on the site plan. We appreciate it.
So heard from Rodney, heard from Mr. Beebe. So it's open for deliberation by commissioners, as well as any questions that you might have for either of them or for the or for the owner, owner of the business.
Wouldn't that cloud that they have satisfy the bicycle parking? I mean, we can see that what what part of the building it's in is.
We just need some dimensions and and like I said, a little bit more specificity about where where it is. A little sketch at the site plan that puts a dimension on it and and will will satisfy that. The reason for that is that there there are standards in the ordinance that address the capacity of the parking, essentially.
For for inside the building too, Rodney?
Well, it simply requires a bike bicycle parking be provided, it can be provided outside. We've not had anybody out and do it inside, but it's completely okay to do that.
But the ordinance is 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 inclusive of inside and outside? Or does it stipulate?
It simply, it simply says provide.
Okay.
And and it has some dimensions related to how close it could be or or just sidewalks and other things, can't block the sidewalk. Has some language like that. But but the language would allow the parking, the bicycle parking to be inside a building. We just want a dimension on it.
And they need to show you where exactly inside this building that's going to be.
Like I said, a sketch is fine and with dimensions. Because what we're looking at is the size, make sure it matches what the ordinance would.
And I got, are you done, James? Because if you're not, I'll.
No, no, I I'm I'm fine. As you say, we can see where it's at, we just didn't have the dimension.
So it's a, it's a simple change.
Okay. Just educate me a little bit on this. If this is approved with conditions versus just approved, and they meet those conditions, can they, and we briefly discussed this at other meetings, can they come back into the office and say, we've met these conditions? Or do they have to wait another month for a meeting that we have, that these conditions have been met?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. So what we what we typically do with, when we have these kinds of housekeeping items on the final site plan, and and you'll see it in the in the proposed motion, one of the conditions is that that the updated plan be reviewed and accepted by the zoning administrator. So so what would, it would not come back to the planning commission. Peter, they would provide the updated plan to to Peter. He would review it, basically looking at, making sure it still matches what 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 you reviewed, that they haven't changed something on it that would cause a problem. But then he's looking at these, whatever conditions there might be, and just verifying they've been satisfied. So so in case the bicycle parking, the the sketch, dimensions on it, he reviews it and finds it meets the ordinance, check that off. The tree, in fact, I just leaned over and talked with Peter. Peter did look at the plan. He he agrees that that the existing tree makes the the count full. So you can eliminate that item, that that condition does not need to be included. They have satisfied the the landscape requirement. But anyway, it it's basically handled in its administrative review and acceptance.
Yeah, I just can't see these conditions anyways, holding up a project that this gentleman's been trying to get done. It just makes sense, but if that's all he has to do at this point, then I just think we need to get his plan, in my opinion, I'm just starting for myself, our planning commission needs to kind of get in that mode maybe where we work with these businesses so they can get their projects done in a timely manner. So I would certainly hate to see those conditions holding up. But if it doesn't, it doesn't, so.
Especially at this time of year.
Exactly. What is the shade, the shade tree just kind of, I mean, it sounds like it's resolved, but was there a purpose for the shade tree?
Well, it's it's simply an ordinance requirement.
Yeah, and I'm very respectful of the ordinance. I'm just curious of what, why a shade tree needs to be in an ordinance on a business like this?
What it is, is there are landscaping and screening requirements that apply when you're doing a, doing a development project. They're not onerous, they're not, they are what they are, they've been added, added to the ordinance. They are, they're, they're, the or, the standards are more than what was in our 1991 ordinance, the one that was before this, that had very little in it related to that.
Right.
And so if you look at some of the older commercial and multiple family residential sites in the township, they reflect that. So having having some basic landscaping requirements allows for certain site beautification. It is, you know, it's part of the creating the physical environment that the township desires. And it happens that there's a formula that when it was looked at, was one tree short. This is exactly what we we normally deal with. We get pointed out to us? Nope, look, it's right there and we're completely okay with it.
All right.
I do have another question. For the conditions that that we can control the bicycle parking and the shade tree type. So Mr. Beebe comes back on Thursday. When could he expect to say, yeah, you're good, you're good to go? And and I, there's a couple other things on the list too that may take a little bit of time. But I mean, is it typically, Peter will look at it in in a day or two and then say, hey, yeah, those two things are resolved?
Yeah, administrative review does not take much time. And in this case, these are very simple changes. So it 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 would, it would take very little time. I I agree with you. I think the outside agencies, I suspect the Public Services Department would be the last item on the list, simply because they 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 have probably the most rigorous review here since they're, you know, they are adding some pipe and adding hydrant. And and as I said, they do look at where where are the existing lines going in and making sure that they're not going to be affected. So the, in terms of our review though, for these these details, in this case, now the one detail related bicycle parking, that's a very simple look. Look at the site plan, verify the details on there, verify that what they've shown matches the ordinance and that item is checked off the list.
Okay, I've been sitting here looking for, can you tell me where in the ordinance the bicycle parking part is?
Uh, it's actually, it's referenced in the in the in the comments. Section 9.1C5 is the reference. It's part of the parking section.
It's not in the index. I looked under bicycle and I looked under parking. 9.1, did you say 1C5?
9.1 subsection C. Subsection 5.
So I'm just gonna, just, we have a little bit of time. I don't want to take up a lot of time, but it says bicycle parking facility should be located in highly visible and accessible areas. How is inside a building, how does that meet that?
So the bicycle parking is there for the the users. In this case, the users and and this facility are the are the employees. And and so if the visible location is in the building for the employees, yeah, that's satisfactory.
Okay. So if this were, if this were a commercial establishment that the general public was coming to, then we would assume that the bicycle parking was at least in part for those customers and therefore it would have to be outside?
It would have to be outside or they would have to signage or other other things, make it clear where the parking was.
Other questions?
I I have a question, maybe Mr. Beebe would answer this. Excuse me, this documentation of permits or approvals from Isabella County Transportation and Township, is that something, is that mandatory or maybe that's mandatory? I I get the feeling that that's causes some great delays. Is am I wrong or right or?
It depends. Not not typically, we we have some delays sometimes with the County Drain Commission because Bruce Rohr is actually living over in in Charlotte area and he comes back and forth to work. You can usually schedule with him, he's he's in and out. I think he's only doing the reviews up until the end of this year. And then Gordy Frazier is going to be taking over, which I have my concerns with because I've dealt with Gordy Frazier in other communities and timelines have always been an issue. So I, I'll wait to see how it goes. I know the rates are are going up, like Clint's site was a $325 review fee or probably $500. So review fees are probably tripling. And and that's your outside municipal engineer. I mean, that that, it's not a small company. It's, it's a big horsepower company that's doing the stormwater reviews. So they do the reviews up in Rosebush. And I've waited six weeks to get reviews. So I I I have some concerns, but they haven't started here, so it's not nice to throw stuff.
No, I understand that. I just, you know, I was kind of getting the vibe that, and I just, that that's very frustrating. Are those rates competitive with other townships or?
Depends on where you go.
Yeah. And this is just for my knowledge.
You go, you go downstate, yes.
Okay.
Up here, yeah. Grashit County has been probably the most expensive and they're in the thousand to 1,200 range. But they were the most expensive of the years and Spicer does. Um, but they were the most expensive in the years, and Spicer does those, which is another big company. You know, like, when you have, uh, guys that are billable rates at a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, looking at stuff, hands up quick. Yeah.
Okay. Mike, if, if I, if I may, just to add a comment to that. Uh, it is, it is true that we are making the adjustment on the stormwater reviews, it's being done because Bruce is retiring. Uh, we have been blessed in the township for a long time, that, that the county, uh, we've had a more or less informal relationship with the county, it's not, not, uh, there's no, no written contract for the county drain commissioner's office to do our, uh, stormwater reviews, they review our site plans based on our ordinance, not the county stormwater ordinance, but our, our ordinance. So it's very unusual circumstance, actually. And, uh, we have been blessed for a long time for that, unfortunately, that, that has come to an end, we, uh, you met notice earlier this year by the county administrator, uh, that Bruce was going to be retiring. We would not have made the change, uh, if it hadn't been necessary. Gordy Frazier is our, our township engineer for, uh, already, uh, they handle most of our, our public services projects, they are also the engineer for our, our new sidewalk projects, the ones that just recently completed, uh, were done by Roe. But, uh, Gordy Frazier's going to be doing the sidewalk that's actually gonna be coming around the building here, and going over to McDonald Park, uh, that's in the design phase right now. So, moving to Gordy Frazier is a logical framework, since they're already doing, uh, this, this type of work for, for the township. We also have a challenge that there are not that many engineering firms, uh, in the area, and if we choose one of the local, a local firm, or a, a smaller firm, uh, we actually create a challenge, because they're often, like Mr. Beebe, working on projects for, for developers, we don't wanna take that away from the development community. So, working, uh, we, we certainly could have, uh, selected a different engineer, we could have put it up for bid. It, it really worked best to simply bring the service under, under the umbrella of the same company that's already providing services for the township, and is already familiar with the township.
Okay, other comments or questions on the, on the, uh, project that's in front of us? Now, we can have a motion if someone is, wants to do that?
I can do that. Uh, make a motion to approve the PS PR twenty-two fourteen final site plan dated August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two for additions to the Rook Metering Michael Engineering Building located at fifty-six twenty-five Venture Way in the northeast quarter of section thirteen, and in the I two general industrial zoning district. Finding that it fully complies with applicable zoning ordinance requirements for final site plan approval. Including section fourteen point two point P required site plan information, and fourteen point two point S standards for site plan approval, subject to the following conditions. Documentation of permits or approval from the Isabella County Commission, I'm sorry, Isabella County Transportation Commission and Township Public Services Department shall be submitted to the zoning administrator prior to issuance of a building permit for this project. Two, add the location dimensions in detail for the current bicycle parking area to the floor plan sheet A one. And then three, zoning administrator review and acceptance of the revised sheet A one and revised sheet eight of eighteen prior to issuance of a building permit for this project. Is it okay that I took the, the third one out with the tree?
Absolutely.
I see, I see that, but let me just make, see if there's a second.
Second.
Okay, so the motion was by Albrecht, as stated with a second by Williams. Uh, Mr. Beebe?
My, my only comment is that floor plan is for the new building, so adding it to that sheet wouldn't actually be appropriate, and, and your motion's very specific. So, can it just be supplied, uh, a detail, a separate detail, or something of the sort?
Well, the key, if, uh, I sort, I don't have objection to changing, I was gonna actually mention that as well, uh, so, but, but Mr. Beebe, uh, raised his hand. We need it to be part of the site plan, so it needs to be part of the updated site plan. Uh, it can be a detail added on to a sheet, the reason that this is so specific is we didn't want to necessarily require Mr. Beebe to give us the entire site plan package again. You know, so we proposed this, so you'd only need to give us the updated sheets, which we could then simply add to the, the approved site plan in our, for our record.
You want me to pick a sheet? Uh, I just, those sheets are done by somebody else, and I don't have control over those, so.
Can you put it as a sheet eight? Cause there's a, cause.
So.
Actually, no, actually, no, I was, I was actually talking about that, uh, for.
Yeah, no, that's.
Oh, do you want it to? Do, do, I didn't.
No, no, no. I'm just looking for a place that I can actually get, get a detail, two sheets on there.
Pretty cool. Just add it as a new sheet?
Yeah, I don't know, I'm gonna need a more detailed sheet, uh, sheet, uh. Detail sheets are correct. Just, no. Oh, no.
We just add it as a new sheet?
We can add it as a new sheet.
So, th- this would be my, my suggestion, um, since we deleted the, the, item three, originally item three about the shade tree. We don't need a revised sheet eight of eighteen. My suggestion is to, to simply, uh, for, for condition number two, to just put a period after area, so it, it, the sentence would end with, uh, details for the current parking area, period. And, uh, and then, uh, and then for, for the last item, zoning review and acceptance of the revised sheet, uh, prior to issuance, uh, would, would be all that would be needed, we don't need to reference the, the numbers.
So, do I need to amend those now?
Yes.
Okay. So, subject to the following conditions, um, document, one, documentation of permits or approval from the Isabella County Transportation Commission and Township Public Service Department shall be submitted to the zoning administrator prior to issuance of a building permit for this project. Two, add the location dimensions, dimensions and details for the current bicycle parking area. And then three, zoning administrator review and acceptance of the revised sheet prior to issuance of a building permit for this project.
So, uh, seconders, okay, so seconder, uh, is fine with the revised, so it, motion was by Albrecht, with second by Williams. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, can we have a roll call, please, when you're, whenever you're ready?
Um, Squadrito?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Baring?
Yes.
Shingles?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
And LaBelle?
Yes.
Okay, those are all yeses.
Okay, thank you. All right. So that one is approved, so our third, uh, new business item tonight is combined preliminary and final site plan application, PS PR twenty-two dash fifteen, Mid Michigan College Athletic Fields, twenty-six hundred South Somerton Row.
Thank you, uh, this, uh, you have, you have the, the, the site plan in your packet, and you have our report dated, uh, September twelfth. This is, uh, coming to you as a, a combined preliminary and final site plan application. So they're essentially trying to, to get both stages of approval together in one step. What the effect of that essentially is, is it's, we're following the fight, final site plan standards, you have to meet, meet the standards for a final site plan. You know, in order for the combined approval to be granted. The, uh, this is an application that came in initially as a preliminary site plan, uh, for preliminary site plan approval earlier this summer. After we received the application, that was recognized that we had a problem with the zoning of the property. You had a hearing earlier this summer, uh, on a separate application to rezone the, the three former residential lots that, uh, fronted on Somerton, and, uh, that, ultimately, that rezoning action was approved by the, the board of trustees and has gone into effect, which allowed them to then move forward with the site plan application. Uh, with the preliminary, the original preliminary site plan application, uh, that came in in June, if I recall, we did, do, we did do a review of that, uh, application, provided a report to the applicant. Although it, it, the, the process was stopped after that, uh, they did at least have our initial comments on the preliminary site plan. And so the plan you, you have before you does reflect some of the, the items that we noted in our, in our earlier review. However, unfortunately, uh, the, the plan that you have before you does not fully comply with the standards for final site plan approval. Uh, our report reflects both preliminary and final, uh, site plan standards. We, we're very comfortable with, with recommending this project for preliminary site plan approval, but we're not comfortable with recommending for final site plan approval, there are simply too many outstanding details, and we'll talk about those in, in a minute, and why it's, it's really necessary for them to come back with a revised final site plan. There are some, uh, basically items, uh, on page, starting on page three of our report, bicycle parking again. This is a relatively new standard, uh, and so I, I think that's somewhat reflective of why we're having to remind, uh, folks of it. In this case, uh, the engineer was aware of it, uh, not, uh, they, but they proposed the, the, uh, bicycle parking in the middle of a, of a sidewalk, blocked sidewalk access, so we simply said we have to relocate it. There's some, some pedestrian access items that are very simple to change and correct. Dumpster details that again are fairly simple to correct, uh, but they were not done in accordance with the ordinance. On page four of our report, page one twelve of the packet, under landscaping and screening, we had a, a, a comment about one of the, one of the evergreen trees, they proposed a, a, the ordinance called evergreen screen. Uh, two rows, staggered rows of, of evergreens, and mostly evergreens along the south property line. This is the area that would be between the, the baseball field and the adjacent existing residence. And, uh, right now, there's not a, there's not a lot of vegetation in that area, so they proposed, they had a screen there. Uh, one of the, the types is not an evergreen tree, it's really a, a large shrub, uh, and it's also not a good screening tree, uh, so we recommend that be changed. The, uh, the, the significant comment that we had here is, is, is a recommendation. The landscaping, other than that, that juniper species that needs to be changed, landscaping essentially meets the minimum requirements of our ordinance, this is landscaping along the south property line, uh, or screening along the south property line, and then the greenbelt along the Somerton frontage that, that the ordinance would ask for. However, uh, it, it's a design that, what might meet the minimum standards, is actually, doesn't seem to be the best choice for the location. You always want to design the landscaping, whatever improvements you make in terms of landscaping, that, that it will be healthy and that it'll also be easily maintained. The, the, the college does an excellent job with maintaining their campus, uh, it's a large campus, there's a lot of grass to mow. And along the strip that you, if you see the strip that, of the proposed greenbelt along the south Somerton frontage, they're proposing to put that right up against the right of way. It, it's a number of trees and a, a, a large number of shrubs. Uh, this is gonna be a fairly high maintenance design. And so we simply included a, a recommendation related to that, that they consider an alternative. Alternative design that perhaps replace those shrubs with perhaps a few more trees, but also spread those trees out in that space, because although they put everything right up against the road right of way, where they can, the ordinance says that. That there was actually a, a wider area there between the right of way and the, the ball fields, and the, and the, uh, training building. So that they could spread those trees out and do it in, you might consider it more like a park-like atmosphere. But also so that it's easy to mow in and around and through them. And so, we just, we just suggested to perhaps consider that, that design as an alternative. Our ordinance has flexibility in that area, we have a section that's just simply title, title modifications, that allows an applicant to propose an alternative design that meets the intent of the ordinance in terms of landscaping and screening. And so, we recommend an alternative, that, that may work better for the college maintenance-wise, but also fit better with the, the character of that part of the site. And it would not be, it would not, looking to alter the, the cost of that, we understand that's a significant cost to do these upgrades. In fact, it might even be less costly, uh, considering that there's a large number of shrubs, uh, in the state, as I said, going and simply trees in that area, in some framework. Uh, so that's, that's a recommendation, it is not a requirement. As I said, in, uh, in terms of meeting the minimum requirements, that what they proposed does meet the minimums. We did recommend that the, that the landscaping be moved to a separate sheet, it's kind of jammed in. And, uh, we would like to see a little more of the context, typically, especially for the screening, we, we typically ask, want to see the, where the residence is next door, so you have an idea in context with what, what this screening is going to be doing, and who, who is going to be, uh, benefiting. So that, that's another, a pretty simple detail to change. The, uh, we have some comments on the exterior lighting, this is also a final site plan item. There were, uh, just some challenges with that, photometric plan was not legible, uh, some, a couple of, uh, the light poles that were being relocated were not noted. So, uh, we, we expect that, that those things can be fixed, but they, they do need to be fixed, so it's legible. Uh, the, the, the big item here is outside agency approvals, and, uh, Commissioner Williams asked earlier about whether outside agency approvals are a requirement. Section fourteen point two point S, one of the items that you, you referenced when we, when we do our motions, that section is standards for site plan approval. In that section, it's a table, and it has, uh, a list of standards of, for, when a final site plan is, or a preliminary site plan is ready for approval. One of those standards is that, that all outside agencies, uh, that are applicable to the project, that there, that if there are permits or approvals that are needed from those outside agencies are either in hand, that is, we've received documentation of them, showing that, that they've, they've accepted the plan and approved whatever their review is, or are assured of approval. That's, and that language is in there very specifically, because often, we have cases, uh, where an agency is not ready to grant a permit, let's say Roe Commission. They may not be ready to grant a permit because there's a requirement for a bond, or a deposit of some sort, you know, to, to take, to make sure that if they damage the road, that they'll fix it. It's, it's a housekeeping item, it doesn't affect, affect the site design, so it's, they, they'll say that, they'll send an email, and they'll say, we find your design to be acceptable, uh, before we grant a permit, we need X, Y, and Z from you, these housekeeping details. Well, that email saying, we find your design to be acceptable, we need a few details, uh, is, is something that, that we can use as an assurance of approval. In this case, the challenge we have is, is the drain commissioner's office, uh, and that part of this project involves moving a county drain. The, uh, it, you, you don't have a copy of this, uh, because we just received it after the packets went out. Uh, we do have some correspondence that was received from, from the county drain commissioner's office. The applicant has been corresponding with them, they have provided previous versions of the plans to them. But they have not taken the final step to actually apply for the county drain commissioner's approval, formal approval. Uh, at least they hadn't as of Friday, uh, they may have by now, but they hadn't as of Friday, which is the, the email date. And they also have not taken the steps they needed to, to get authorization to move the drain, uh, from its current location. That's a, that's, there's a legal action associated with that, there, there are easements, they're gonna have to literally record easement, abandon easement, there's, that's a legal process. We're not looking for them to have finished that legal process. What we're looking for them, from the drain commissioner's office is first of all, that the drain commissioner's done their formal review, they've essentially done informal review. Uh, and made some comments. That they've done their formal review, that, that the cost has been paid to them, and, and a letter has come to us, or an email has come to us saying, we find the design to be acceptable. And, you know, in terms of moving the county drain, we find that to be acceptable, subject to. to these legal details being taken care of, uh, the, the normal process to, to actually do the relocation and record easements and such. That would be again, an assurance of approval. Unfortunately, we're not there yet. The, the email we received, uh, the email chain on Friday, uh, as we said, simply notes the review, notes comments, uh, but also notes that, that this, the process that's required by the County Drain Commissioners' Office has not yet been, uh, fully followed. So with that in mind, uh, the project is not ready for final site plan approval. I wish it was, but it's not. And, uh, and so we're recommending that, that the project be granted preliminary site plan approval only, uh, for tonight. That would require them to come back to you for, for a, a final site plan action in the future. Uh, and we're also recommending that the applicant consider, uh, adjusting the landscaping, uh, as, as we noted in our report. As I said, they do not have to do that, but we, and it's not something you need to take an action on tonight. If they, if they do adjust it, uh, that, that would be something you would be looking at as a modification. And, uh, so if you have any comments on that tonight, it would certainly be a good time to offer them. But, uh, there's not a, a condition or anything that needs to be associated with that recommendation. So with that, I kind of a lot of detail there. I'm happy to answer questions as we go along.
Okay. Thank you. And be happy to hear from the applicant now.
There's three of us here.
So you guys, you guys, you guys decide who wants to speak first.
Well, I don't want to, but I will. I'm Matt Miller from the college. Everyone, see you again. So Matt Miller from Emerson College. I have with me Marty Ryder, who is from Hobbs and Black. He's our architect. And then Matt Boats, who is with Row Engineering. And they're going to answer all the tough questions. I'm just going to be up here and answer whatever I can. Thank you for hearing it. Thank you for looking at the plan. I appreciate Rodney and Peter's efforts to help us get it to this point. We have looked at all this stuff and are making modifications and doing all of that. I think our hope tonight, uh, we've got things in motion. We've got a board meeting on October fourth. We've got things we would like to move forward. We're hoping if possible to, to contrary to Rodney's recommendation, hopeful to do a, both a preliminary and final approval within the contingencies as we, as they talked before earlier, to do some administrative, uh, oversight and review of any changes we might make. The stormwater piece, the, the drain commission piece is well underway. All those things we expect to be not a problem. A lot of the things in here, as Rodney was talking about, they mentioned that they're, they're small tweaks and things we need to make, and, and those are completely understandable and things we're, we're looking at doing. So that's what we're hoping for and happy to answer any questions you have.
I, I need, I don't want to hug the microphone so anybody can jump in, but on the key findings, Rodney, on number three, you've got landscaping and screening. I'm assuming you just meant that that's an additional page or a separate page for landscaping because it just said that you recommend it. They're meeting, already meeting the minimum qualifications. You just recommended they do something different. So when you, when they look at this and it spells out landscaping and screening, is that?
Well, there's, there is the one requirement. The juniper is not an acceptable tree.
Oh, that's the other one. Okay.
So we would, uh, agree with Rodney on that and we would make the, we would make that change to an acceptable tree.
So that, that's why we would.
So at, at this point, I just, um, at this point, um, we have made and we have brought drawings with us tonight that address all Rodney's concerns. There aren't any issues. We agree with them and we've incorporated them into the, incorporated them into the drawings. And I think Matt Boats with Row right now is looking for an email from the Drain Commissioner. I believe he has given, uh, his written approval and the college is dropping off a six hundred and fifty dollar check tomorrow. So, um, again, Matt, I don't know if you can find that email that you have and you can maybe read it to the planning commission?
Yeah. Um, this is from Tim Warner at the Drain Commissioners' Office.
Peter hasn't received this email.
Uh, as we discussed, the project is contingent on completing the relocation of the drain.
Would you like the paper version of these?
Well, yeah, we should have run that over.
Uh, the stormwater plan has been reviewed and it meets the union township ordinance. I do not have a completed stormwater application on file or any fees paid, which we're dropping off tomorrow. And then they need an additional exhibit to describe the existing portion of the drain that will be abandoned to delude.
Did this just come today?
Friday.
Or Friday?
This is the email I was talking about.
Oh, I see. Yep.
The, the challenge here is that this does not say that the relocation is accepted, that it's, it, it, it does not address the, the assurance factor, uh, because they have not formally reviewed this yet. At this point, they're just comments. And, uh, and what we're looking for and what, what reviewer, what Bruce is, is expect, expects to provide is an action that says, "Yes, I find this to be acceptable." And it's going to include addressing the relocation of the drain. So this, the email does address the, the issues, but it does not provide an assurance.
But, but if we were to approve the preliminary and the final site plan with these, all these conditions, wouldn't, that wouldn't, all that require or be allowed to go to administrative review in the, in the interim instead of waiting for another meeting or, or some of these conditions not okay with administrative, you know, consultation or help?
Try to wear this from, uh, go back and forth. The, uh, the issue here is essentially that there are, there's a significant number of issue, uh, of details need to be addressed. The issue is, is that we have a circumstance here where we have, uh, items that, that could potentially change the site design. I understand that they may have a plan, obviously, an updated plan. Obviously, we haven't reviewed it. Nobody's seen it. We don't accept, uh, updated plans over the counter, over, over the, on the, you know, the desk here at a meeting. They're, they're accepted at township during business hours. And, uh, but we, we have potential circumstances, especially related to relocation of that drain, that could affect the site design. And that's something we don't normally grant a final site plan approval for. Absolutely grant a preliminary. We often approve a preliminary site plan with, "Take care of this, take care of that. We prefer this layout to that." I mean, you provide direction with part of a preliminary site plan, uh, but we don't normally do that with a final. And there's good reason for that.
Does the email say that it meets the township ordinance, Rodney?
It does not say that. No, actually, your email says that, but, but not, not, you know, from the, from the County.
So the email we have says that.
No, no. The, the response from, from the Row Engineer says that it, uh, it's required. The, the, the statement from Bruce does not say that it meets the ordinance requirement.
Okay. And, and that's just a fairly large item that you're saying, hey, if it changes the site plan, then that's, that's over and above administrative review.
Yeah. I mean, if they can't, right now, they're proposing to, to do work over a county drain easement. That's something normally we would not approve a site plan for. And so until we have an assurance that the County Drain Commissioners' Office agrees and says, "Yes, the relocated drain is fine and abandonment of the current easement is fine," then that's, at that point, we have an assurance that, that we can approve a site plan, uh, that we're not going to be allowing construction over a county drain easement. So that's, that's really, like I said, this is something, uh, that would affect the site design and certainly right now we'd essentially be approving a site plan that would be doing work over a county drain easement. And that's not, that's not something we would recommend doing.
And you don't anticipate the Drain Commissioner approving that, is what you're saying?
Well, I, I, I don't disagree with the idea that, that it's likely to be acted on favorably, uh, but I'm not, I, I don't have any authority over the County Drain Commissioner.
I understand. What I'm just saying is if we made that a condition, I mean, it's kind of what I was thinking. If you made all these conditions and then if they get it all taken care of within the next week or so, they wouldn't have to wait, uh, another, another month.
Well, this is something that, that, I think it was something that we would need to look at really more generally because frankly, this is not the only project that would prefer to do it that way. Clint's auto body would have loved to have gotten a final site plan approval today. They didn't ask for it because they, they, they know we have this process and they don't have, I have it, all the details in place for final. But a similar list of conditions, they could have gotten a final site plan tonight. If we're going to do that, then we really need to look at updating our ordinance to make the final site plan process an administrative approval, where you would see the preliminary plan, but you would not see the final. That, that could speed up the process, but there are significant changes between the two. And normally those changes are, is desirable for you to see the difference. For example, if they propose to adjust the landscaping, it's desirable for you to see that updated plan.
I don't think we are going to adjust the landscaping because it meets the ordinance. Can I take a moment here and read this email that we received today from the Drain Commissioner? As we discussed, the project is contingent on completing the relocation of the drain. So they will not approve it in final until the drain is actually physically relocated. The stormwater plan has been reviewed and it meets the union township ordinance. I do not have a completed stormwater application on file or fees paid. Once it is complete, I can issue a formal approval letter. So when we submit the application tomorrow and Matt drops off the check, he is going to issue his formal approval letter. Done.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I guess I'm a little confused though because.
That's from Tim Warner.
Yeah. But so there's, there's two pieces to this then, right? There's whatever you've, you have in there as a stormwater plan, but then there's also the issue of this, this drain, which is a significant piece of infrastructure is going to be moved.
That's addressing the drain.
No, this is addressing stormwater plan. There's, there's no.
The drain is a part of that, Rodney, because.
Okay. I apologize. I, I, I do not want to deny these folks final site plan action. If there was a way I could have gotten this to you as a combined preliminary final and recommended it, I would have. We've had this conversation before and I've said it before.
That's a letter of assurance.
But what we have right here is not an assurance related to the relocation of the county drain. I agree. You're absolutely right. It does have the statement that reviewed it and it meets the township ordinance. That's for stormwater management. It doesn't, we do not regulate the county drain in our, as part of our stormwater management ordinance. So they have not addressed the, the applica, the, the details of relocating the county drain here. And frankly, it's completely appropriate that he hasn't because they haven't even applied for that yet, as of Friday, when this was written. It's, frankly, I was really shocked to learn that they had not applied to the County Drain Commissioners' Office until after Friday to, to get that approval. This is something that could have been done at any time. That although we had this rezoning business that hung up their site plan, that would not have stopped them from working with the County Drain Commissioners' Office to, to address these issues long before now. And so I'm shocked that they had not applied before Friday.
Relocation of the drain is part of the stormwater management plan toward the site. It has to be in order to build the ball fields.
The, our stormwater ordinance does not address county drain easements. It doesn't address county drain. That's entirely under their authority.
The letter is from the Drain Commissioner, Rodney, and it says he will approve it tomorrow when the application and the fee is paid.
So, so just to kind of go back to.
That's an assurance.
Yes. Just to go back to my question, basically you're saying that you'd prefer not to approve the final site plan with administrative taking care of all the other stuff, making sure they meet all these conditions, you're saying, because if the site plan changes, then, then it would need to come back in front of us or should come back in front of us.
Absolutely. Right now, it does not meet the standards for final site plan approval related to the outside agency permits and approvals. That language I'm about to be issued.
You set precedent with the previous motion.
I, I wish it did. It does not.
You set precedent with the previous motion.
May I, sir, sir, I apologize. May I finish my statement? What I will say to you is this, that you as a planning commission have full authority to act on this application as you choose. I have had a circum, experience in my life, fortunately, only once in my career, and certainly not here, uh, but only once in my career, but it did happen where a planning commission took action to approve a site plan that completely violated their, their ordinance. There were personal circumstances related to that. There was a lot of pressure being put on, uh, and frankly, the, uh, the chair made a very big mistake. But nonetheless, they took an action. They approved a site plan that completely violated their ordinance. But that site plan became the approved site plan regardless of the fact it was, it violated our ordinance and that person was allowed to build what was on the approved site plan. So what I'm saying to you is this case, and I say that, that's an extreme case. What I'm saying to you here is right now we have a, a site, a site plan that violates our final site plan standards for approval. You absolutely can take the action. If you choose to, to approve this as a combined preliminary final and you choose to do it with, with the conditions that are noted, uh, in the, in, in the draft motions for preliminary only, uh, you absolutely have the ability to, to choose to do that. I'm, I'm going to suggest to you that you're, you are setting in a unfortunate precedent and it is something that we probably should. If, if that's the direction you'd like to go, we probably should look at how the site plan actions are taken and perhaps consider looking at making the final site plan and administrative action. Some communities, especially in, in, in large cities, that is something that's often the case. And it, so it, it can be done. It can absolutely be a final action. It, it puts the approval in the hands of Arizona administration. But it's not something I recommend because there are changes between the two plans and typically it's good for you to see those changes. But yes, you, you could take the motion that we've provided. We have the motion there to approve only the preliminary site plan with conditions and simply adjust it to reference a combined preliminary and final site plan, uh, and add the conditions that are noted there. And at that point, then the review would be administrative. I do not recommend it, but you do have the ability to choose that if you choose.
Okay. You don't recommend it because you said it violates the ordinances. And I would agree with you if there wasn't conditions stipulated. So if conditions are stipulated that, that would require it to fulfill the ordinances, then we're not in violation anymore. Is that correct?
Well, I would say this, that, let's, let's, let's think of this, you know, we're talking about a county drain easement. Let's talk about is it, this is, again, a bit of an extreme example, but let's say that the plan required the relocation of South Summerton Road. Seen projects like that, airport, you know, expansions and such have done that. And, and the road commission had not signed off on the idea of relocating South Summerton Road because that's really where we are right now. The, the email does not address the county drain easement, uh, and relocating it. So if you approve a final site plan for the project that includes constructing a ball field in what is right now the county road commission's right of way and relocate, requires relocation of that road without the county road commission giving their assurance that they agree that, yes, we're, we're completely on board with this, then you, you're approving a site plan that really creates a conflict with, with the physical features of the, of the area, but also creates conflicts with, with dedicated right of way. And that's the same thing here. We have a dedicated right of way for the county drain. And right now, that, that, that dedicated right of way for the county drain has to be relocated. I wish that the applicant had done the, taken care of this already. It should have been taken care of already. They didn't.
But if, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
And so under that circumstance, I do not recommend that you approve a final site plan. Remember, the next step after final site plan approval is destruction. All they need is, is what, they get a final site plan approval, they meet all the requirements for that, the next step is get a building permit. And we don't want to be in a circumstance where, where we're authorizing or we're required to authorize, you know, uh, even theoretically a, a building permit for work that's, it's within a county drain easement. It's simply not, not appropriate. It doesn't respect the county drain commissioners authority and, and it doesn't respect our ordinance.
If I can, just as a quick aside, or aside because it's relevant to this piece, uh, to clear up the, there is a stormwater issue and a, and a drain issue. The, the permit that I signed to turn in tomorrow with the check and all that is a stormwater application and so it addresses that stormwater piece. Row Engineering's been working with, and Matt can clear up anything I say wrong here, but Row Engineering's been working with the Drain Commissioner for months. Uh, and to my understanding, all of that's been approved except for the legal description. It is the exact, it's the easement piece where you have to have, you know, the, the latitude and longitude or wherever it is, the legal description of the, the place where the new easement needs to be. But the, the, the plans have been with the Drain Commission for months and they've approved that new location. It's just the legal piece of the new easement is, is now being tied up.
Do you have the documentation of that?
We've never seen that.
So no, I guess not. I don't follow that part, but.
You know, that's, that's an area that I, I'm going to support Rodney on. You're coming tonight with some correspondence and you're just getting on your phone. I mean, I, there's, there was two pieces of correspondence, right? One was before where I think you guys got the email. And then there was another one you're reading for tomorrow, but tonight's our meeting, right? You know what I'm saying? And you're kind of climbing on him because you guys weren't fully prepared to come with a final site plan. You didn't, according to him, you didn't have your ducks in a row and now you're wanting to kind of circumvent that because you got an October fourth board meeting. And nobody is more on your side than we are up here to try to get this project done. We're fully supportive of people getting in a timely manner, but I mean, I think you But I mean, I think you need to give the man a little slack that you're not prepared with your information.
Well, I think the picture noted, thank you. Uh, the picture painted by Rodney is a little bit extreme, that relocation of Summerton. Maybe Rodney wasn't aware that Row had been working with the drain commissioner for months on the drain relocation. So maybe it was just, he wasn't informed on what was going on.
Well, there's the problem, then somebody needed to inform him. Somebody needed to communicate, show him documentation that this is done. And I think we'd have a different conversation, I hope, tonight. Because I'd love to be done with this so you guys can move on with your project.
Well, I think it would be, uh, I mean, the conditional approval was, is, is within, uh, within reach of it. And I think that, um, you know, you set a precedent with the last site plan approval, about an administrative approval. So I don't know if that's really an issue.
I don't know if it was of this magnitude, am I wrong Rodney? I don't know the damp significance of this magnitude.
I'm just, I'm just going to jump in and say that I think we need to back away from a, a back and forth discussion. This is not a negotiation. The township, uh, planning commission has to reach a decision as best as it can, uh, with, with information as provided. So we can ask questions and we can listen to responses, but I don't want to have, I don't want to have a back and forth at this point.
I don't either, but I, I'm not going to sit here and see Rodney get in that phase.
No, no, we're, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not criticizing us. I'm just saying I want, if people want to speak, they need to seek recognition and then we'll consider recognizing them and then we'll, we'll have further discussion. But, uh, so I, I saw, I saw gross and then I saw shingles, so we'll have.
I'd like to kind of support what Commissioner Williams talked about. Uh, I've been on other boards before and we're starting to make eleventh hour decisions because over emails where we always end up regretting them. And I, I respect what you said, I kind of respect what you said also, but moving drains is a big deal. Getting easements is a big deal. And, and I wouldn't want to make a decision tonight that, that we may regret, excuse me, regret because all, we didn't have the proper information in a timely manner.
Commissioner Shingles?
Yeah, my question was for Rodney. Rodney, as you talked about, um, potentially violating the ordinance, the consequences of that with, with the outside agency could be litigation from the, from the county, the drain commissioner, that we approve a site plan that violates our, um, our ordinance and does not allow them the authority that they have to approve what they're responsible for approving. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct, that is the conflict here.
Okay, then I think as a, as a, um, as a township commission, we have a fiduciary responsibility to not put the township at risk by making that decision when we know the consequences could be. I want to move this along too, uh, build ball fields, I know, I know all of these things, but this is, this is outside of our purview. If it was within the authority of the township, then that's a different story. It's not. We, we have an outside agency that has to grant permission for this to happen for all things to seem together. So to Commissioner Williams' point of, you know, I, I, I don't know if I'm married to an October fourth board meeting. I understand board meetings, we have one next week too, so I, I do understand those. But at this point, that can't be a compelling reason why we make the decisions that we make.
Agreed, hundred percent. Yeah, and I just was just wondering if there was any way, again with administrative, which again, it, it sounds like it's too extreme. I know the one that, the previous site plan that we approved was a preliminary site plan with conditions. This is much different because it's a final site plan with conditions, so would that be fair to say?
That was, the, the Michael Engineering was a final site plan that had a very simple housekeeping change on it. So, and, and we do approve final site plans with conditions of that housekeeping character. Uh, but this is far beyond that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that clarification. And that's what I was, that's where I was going, just trying to kind of figure all that out.
Commissioner Shingles?
Just into that, that comparison was not a condition that was impacted by an outside agency, correct?
Right, and it didn't actually change the site design in any way.
Okay, gotcha, yeah, okay.
Okay, other comments from commissioners? You've seen a lot, I'm just going to ask this. You've seen a lot of, of, I'm sure, emails from all these different agencies. How do you parse the email that they sent, that they received?
Well, actually nor, normally what they, the, the agencies we work with are aware of what we're expecting to see. So, uh, the, the approval that will come from the county drain commissioner's office, uh, when they, when they actually do grant that or grant, provide an email that essentially says, yes, we're going to, uh, approve, let's say again, if there are details like the legal description and such. Uh, they, they're going to use the language that, that we're looking for that provides that assurance. Uh, we, we receive that, each of the agencies has their own way of, of, of providing the reports, but as part of their comments, they make it clear that they're comfortable with the design or that they want changes to that design. And right now, what we have is we have certainly covering part of the ground, uh, at least informally saying it meets our requirement, our ordinance. They formally reviewed it, uh, during commissioner's office for stormwater management. But there, there's nothing in that email at all that addresses the county drain relocation. And so there's nothing that we can use to provide an assurance or, or that, that, that they're okay with that proposed relocation. I, as I said, I would not be surprised that they would look at that favorably. It, uh, but nonetheless, we do have to respect that they have that, that right to control that area of ground and, and to say yes or no, and we need to find out from them what they say before we act on the site, final site plan. So we've already approved a preliminary site plan that shows that change, but that's a preliminary site plan. I'm sorry, but we have, I, because I reviewed it earlier this year, that's what I was thinking. We, we, we have before you, we're recommending approval of the preliminary site plan for this. Uh, but that's a preliminary site plan. That doesn't authorize construction, that authorizes them to go out and deal with the outside agencies and, and do all the other engineering work and then come back with a final site plan.
I'll, I'll make a motion. We approve the, only the PSPR twenty-two dash fifteen preliminary site plan dated August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two for the Mid Michigan College Mount Pleasant Athletic Complex located twenty-six hundred Summerton Road in the southeast quarter of section thirteen and in the B four general business zoning district, finding that the site plan fully complies with applicable zoning ordinance requirements for preliminary site plan approval, including sections fourteen dot two dot P required site plan information and fourteen at two dot S standards for site plan approval.
Spark.
Okay, so you're just, you're, you're approving it, but not with any conditions?
No, I don't think the, I don't think the, uh, the.
The conditions can be, those are items that are final site plan.
Recognition, then bring out any, any conditions.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, so the motion has been made by Williams, I believe there was a second by Thering, is that right? Okay, to approve the preliminary site plan as presented. Further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion?
I just want to, want to clarify. So it's not the conditions, because those conditions that are listed are for the site, final site plan only.
Hey, yeah, this is, this is, I guess, a housekeeping item. The, the, the conditions could be on there and that would simply provide in the minutes, uh, recognition that you've referenced and put them on notice, you need to take care of them. Those are all items that, that must be addressed as part of a final site plan. So I'm comfortable with the motion.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Lavelle?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Squaredito?
Yes.
Thering?
Yes.
And Shingles?
Yes.
All yeses, motion passes.
So we do, we do hope to see this again as soon as it can be reasonably, uh, managed and we still like the project.
A, a project, it takes just a moment. How many sets of the plans we have?
One.
During business hours.
All right, um, let's see. So the last, uh, new business item is adoption of the twenty twenty-three, uh, schedule of meetings. And so you've got a revised corrected printing of that at your desks here this evening. So I'll turn it over to Rodney if there's anything you'd like to say about this, uh, this schedule.
Thank you, uh, just a, a couple of quick comments. This is, is proposed to follow our current framework on the third Tuesday. Uh, there are just two items I wanted to mention. Uh, January seventeenth, it's noted on here. January seventeenth, we have traditionally used as a opportunity for a joint discussion with the sidewalks, sidewalks and pathways committee, uh, and so that's, that's proposed on here. Uh, the, when the sidewalks and pathways committee meets in October, they'll be setting their calendar too. Well, it will, uh, obviously suggest the same thing. I think that's been a very productive discussion, so that's proposed. Um, the other item I just note is the April fifth joint meeting. Uh, we did that earlier this year, uh, for the first time in a few years. Uh, and, uh, very, very good discussion. It's, this is a, a joint meeting of all the township boards and commissions. Uh, we met, we met together at the, at the commission on aging. And that is at this point tentatively scheduled for Wednesday, April fifth, which is the first Wednesday of the month in April. And, uh, so recommend that be included on your schedule and that you include it in your calendar as, as possible because, uh, it's certainly a good time to, to meet together with the board of trustees and, and discuss, uh, the, uh, provide updates and discuss the topics that are of interest.
Can you remind me, um, the reason that, that the January meeting was originally chosen for the sidewalks, for that joint meeting with the sidewalks and pathways?
So the, uh, the sidewalks and pathways committee typically meets quarterly. Uh, the, and, uh, their, their purpose is primarily to identify future sidewalk projects. Uh, they're, what are, what are our priorities for constructing additional, uh, township constructed public sidewalks? Where do we need them? And, and so their, their quarterly meetings have kind of a schedule. Uh, and, uh, and so this would be the first of their meetings. So it's a good opportunity for the planning commission to provide a direction you may have because the next meeting starts the conversation about developing those priorities. Typically, they have, they have, uh, they're kind of front loaded in the year because they, they have a meeting with you in January, then they typically have two meetings in the spring. Uh, the first one is general discussion of, of possible priorities, uh, looking at the projects that have been done. Uh, and, uh, and then the second meeting, which usually occurs in, in May or June, uh, is, uh, basically for them to take an action for a final recommendation on what they would, would recommend be done for sidewalk projects in the following fiscal year. Uh, and the reason it's at that time is because July first is when we start our budget process, uh, that, that opens up. Uh, and so we want to have those recommendations in hand as we're looking at the budget. Uh, and, uh, and then they have a meeting late in the year, it's October twenty-seventh. And that meeting is both to set a calendar for the next year, but also to discuss other priorities, uh, longer term priorities, regional, uh, uh, topics, you know, so kind of broader, a broader brush look at things. Uh, so that, that's their framework and that's why January is a good time for you to meet with them and give them direction right at the beginning of the year.
All right, yeah, and it's probably, I mean, we, I think we probably assume that our, our agendas may be a little bit shorter that time of year. I just think of the, the sidewalks and pathways are all covered with snow then, so we're just really doing it from imagination. But anyway, so then, um, what you need from us is approval of our piece, the planning commission's schedule for twenty twenty-three?
That, that's correct, yeah, and you're, you're right, I did, we did put a, a motion here for this, but it's, it's a, a motion to approve the planning commission calendar of meetings for twenty twenty-three.
Okay, it does say approval denial, approval with conditions or postpone action. Could, could the return of the chocolates be one of the conditions? I mean, I just feel like.
Uh, if, if you choose, you absolutely can, can include a condition on it.
All right, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the planning commission meeting schedule for twenty twenty-three.
So, uh, or.
Motion is by Shingles, second by Gross, further discussion?
Yeah, just a couple of questions, is there a reason there's a few of the months that are missing? We're not having.
Oh, that was, did you not have one of those?
Oh, all right, yeah, I can see it.
It was in the original.
They're like, wait a minute here.
Yeah, I saw that last week and I was like.
You don't really have to come to this.
We got a, we got a short year next year, all right. Yeah. Yeah. Scratch that question.
Okay, any further discussion? I'll just ask for a voice vote on this one, all in favor of approving the, uh, twenty twenty-three schedule, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, so, plan on those dates. Um, let's see, uh, other businesses, is there any other business, uh, that we need to address tonight?
I have a quick question, but I don't know if it should go here or down to the final board comment, so. I just had a question about the timeline in terms of when they're supposed to have all their materials to you. I just, just for clarification, I just want to know to help, better help me understand.
So for, for site plans, we, we encourage applicants to get them in four weeks before the meeting. Uh, we have, have a set a, a deadline of, of three weeks before the meeting, sort of our absolute minimum. Uh, the, uh, we've also, even with, even with that three weeks, we've occasionally fudged it a little bit if, when, when we know something's coming, especially when we've seen the plan before and this is an update to it. Uh, that, that review is less intensive. Uh, so I'm sure that they will be able to get the plans, and it sounds like they already have them, uh, they'll probably be turning up tomorrow, it sounds like. But, but typically, we're looking at four weeks preferred, three weeks.
Yeah.
Okay, um, all right. So the next item is extended public comment. Anyone who'd like to address the planning commission on any item, whether it's on tonight's agenda or not, invited to do so at this time, give us your name and address for the minutes. Limit your comments to five minutes on any topic. Extended public comments open at eight forty-two. And seeing none, we'll go ahead and close that back up for another month. Uh, next item is final board comment, any comments from board members?
Yeah, I would, I'd like to be back after several months being gone and being out of surgeries. I'd be back and be back in this room as well, so.
Yeah, welcome back.
Good to see you.
Um. Been a while.
We, we, I guess we'll not give you any heavy, actual heavy lifting for the time being.
This is heavy and I'm not wanting to get it and tear ourselves.
Still, still on a sling.
Seriously, just good to be back.
Yeah, good to have you back. Um, Commissioner Thering, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, I appreciate Commissioner Williams' comments earlier. I feel the applicant needed and deserved to hear them. I, I felt a little frustrated that, um, I was getting a little frustrated with, with them in the respect of, I, I just, I thought it was appropriate. I think it, I, I think those comments stopped and let them know where, where we stood. It was, it was more of my opinion, an argument instead of, uh, good discussions.
I would comment the same. I think it was, I, I've been on other boards and it, it never works out well when you don't get information. A board gets information well ahead to make those decisions. It was, it just, I was troubled by that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I was, I was as well.
Well, and just having been on the commission a lot of years, um, and the entire time I've been on the commission, um, Commissioner Squaterio's been the chair, um, we gave them a long rope and I'm not used to seeing that.
Well.
And I would just say that obviously, you know, for, for context of usually there's, you know, there's order, you know, you have to be, you know, you have to be acknowledged and, you know, the back and forth got, you know, yeah. So, yeah, so anyway, that was surprising because I know.
Well, that was, that was why I did finally jump in. My comments were directed at, at, mostly at them and not at any of the commissioners because I realized it was getting a little too informal. I blame the fact that I did not have Commissioner Buckley sitting off to the side giving me the evil eye.
So if you don't know within the board, you're running this argument on. He says nothing, he just gives a look.
Well, yeah, and just a couple of comments Rodney, I mean, I, you know where I stand. I'm always trying to get as much as I can, that's why I was just asking if there's any way, because I felt like they were unprepared, they were frustrated and they were trying to figure out a way to, to get it pushed through. I mean, I could sense that in their body language and, and is there any, like I said, I'm just, and I'm not asking to do, you to do anything that is going to put. that is going to put the township at risk. I just was, that's why I was asking, hey, is there any chance that you could do this under administrative review? And it sounded like it was just too, possible, but too risky. Would that be fair to say?
That is, that is.
Yeah, so no, and I'm, and I'm in agreement with everybody here and that's why I voted the same way. So I appreciate your patience with working through some of those questions because I was kind of trying to put you on the spot. I was just trying to understand if it's possible and it was definitely too risky. So, thank you.
I absolutely respect the comments. I respect the point of view. Frankly, it's good to be pushing to try to get these projects done if we can. And so I have no issue with any of the comments, even if they might have been, you know, putting pressure on. That's no problem. That's exactly what you're here for and I'm glad you do it.
Well, and in the world of board meetings, boards like one thing, good news. And they're not going to get good news on October 3rd or 4th. Boards like good news, especially when you're spending half of your money on a project. So I get that, but, you know, we have fiduciary responsibility to not put the township at risk.
I wonder if we'll be in the minutes. I said, I wonder if we'll be in the minutes from the board meeting, the planning commission.
So hopefully we'll see that again next month. How does next month's agenda look? Do we have anything unusual coming down the pike?
Well, we'll have that. We're working on, as I said, zoning ordinance amendments to some of the topics we've discussed that, putting the draft together. Like to have that too. Also like to have more parks and rec stuff for you. So that's kind of where we're at, looking at the projects.
If Clint Oliver-Boddy has a final site plan ready, I would hope that they can turn it around.
Okay, sounds good.
I think the college will have its final plan as well. At least that's what they're probably telling the board.
Okay, well, if there's no other comments from board members, then we've completed our agenda for tonight. And so we'll stand adjourned until October. Happy fall, everybody.